Your answer.
That's great. I'd like to call the Village of Lansing Planning Board Meeting of September 28, 2021, to order at 7:02 PM. First item on the agenda is approval of minutes. We have two sets tonight, the first one being August 31, 2021. Has everybody had a chance to look those over? Do we have any additional changes or amendments? And if not, would somebody make a motion, please?
I move that we accept the or approve the minutes of August 31st, 2021.
Second.
Tony, second. Mike, first. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. It is unanimous. This next set is from September 13, 2021. If no changes, a motion would be welcome.
I'll move to approve a minute.
Second.
Monica, seconded by Mike. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, moving along. Public comment period. Anybody here this evening that would like to bring up something that's not on the agenda? It doesn't look like it to me, but I don't want to presume. Okay, if not, motion to close the public comment period, please?
I will move to close the public comment period.
Jim? Tony, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next item on the agenda is continuing the public hearing for special permit 2021, 4515. Brett Morgan of Aerosmith Development, representing Verizon Wireless, is proposing to make some changes to the communication tower owned by Diamond Communications located at 2309 North Trip Hammer Road, Tax Parcel 46.1-5-4.2/99. Applicant is proposing to swap out existing items such as 12 antennas and six remote heads with new equipment. There will be no changes to the ground equipment or base of the facility. As per Village Code 14543-D1A and 14560-J, a special permit is required for any alteration of a telecommunications facility. So, last time, we had some, well, we were waiting for Brent, who kindly sent us a report. Thank you, Brent. You want to, I think in there you said, has everybody had an opportunity to read Brent's report?
Yes.
If not, Mike could bring it up. Okay, so there doesn't, we've all had a chance to do that, and Brent's recommendation is that based on, you know, his review, that he recommends the planning board approve the special permit. However, he also recommends a condition that requires, that will require the applicant to provide an installation inspection report from a third-party engineer to be submitted prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy for the completion of the project. So, you want to just let us know, like, who that, who you, is there anyone in particular you think should do that, Brent, or?
Just, um, somebody other than the applicant or the contractor. The reason being is, in any normal building permit, Mike can go out and inspect footers, he can inspect framing, he can inspect everything about the job, and he can sign off on it. Pretty sure unless Mike's a bill seeker, I don't know about, he's probably not going to go up on, take a look at this thing. And the easiest way to do that is for an independent third-party engineering firm to, if they want to go up, that's up to them. If they have some other method of, you know, determining the compliance, that's really up to them. But just anybody, you know, it doesn't have to be specific. Brett, I'm guessing you've run into this, or you had to supply this in the past?
We have.
Yeah.
So is there anyone in particular, Brett, that you would recommend? Or is this just up to Brett to handle this for us?
Yeah.
Okay.
Whoever he hires, or, you know, whoever he engages. Well, unless Mike Scott feels otherwise, I don't feel to specify it.
Okay. All right, so we have your engineering report. We already heard from the county, I believe, Mike, last time?
Yes, the county has no recommendations.
And we reviewed EAF Part 1, and I see that Brett has added that minor change that I requested. So, the next thing is for us to go through the Short Environmental Assessment Form Part 2 and do complete our part of the EAF. So I'll read this, and unless anybody has any objections, I will, please, let me know if you do. So, we are the lead agency, and we have, "Will the proposed action create a material conflict with an adopted land use plan or zoning regulations?" No. No. Did somebody say something? Oh, it sounded like it. "Will the proposed action result in a change in the use or intensity of use of land?" No. "Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of the existing community?" No. "Four, will the proposed action have an impact on the environmental characteristics that caused the establishment of a critical environmental area?" No. "Five, will the proposed action result in an adverse change in the existing level of traffic or affect the existing infrastructure for mass transit, biking, or walkway?" No. "Will the proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy and fails to incorporate reasonably available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities?" No. "Will the proposed action impact existing public-private water facilities, supplies?" No. "Public-private wastewater treatment utilities?" No. "Eight, will the proposed action impair the character or quality of important historic, archaeological, architectural, or aesthetic resources?" No. "Nine, will the proposed action result in an adverse change to natural resources such as wetland, water bodies, groundwater, air quality, flora and fauna?" No. "Ten, will the proposed action result in an increase in the potential for erosion, flooding, or drainage problems?" No. And the final 11, "Will the proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health?" No. That being said, I would entertain, um, I don't think there were, there's any comments we needed to make. I would entertain motion to accept no change. I always feel like, what is our motion? To accept no impact?
No, or little impact.
Yep. No.
You can go to the resolution, Lisa.
I was gonna say, do we usually, I was, all of a sudden, I'm.
There's a resolution, once you approve that resolution, that permits you to go Part 3.
Okay, so we have our resolution, the Seeker Review of Special Permit Number 20214515, regarding, as we said, Aerosmith Development, representing Verizon, proposing to make changes to the communication tower located in 2309 Tax Parcel 46.1-5-4.2/99, in swapping out, basically updating equipment. And so, on September, there's a bit of a typo here in the res. It's got the wrong year, I think. Thank you. On September 28, 2021, the Village of Lansing performed the lead agency function. We reviewed the short EAF, and we've determined that there is no or small impact. So therefore, based on that review, and all the other documentations prepared and submitted with respect to this action, and comments, we've got the county's remarks and the various general laws. We completed short Part 2. We have, we hereby make a negative determination of environmental significance, i.e. a negative declaration, and determines that an environmental impact statement will not be required. Do I have a motion to, basically, based on this, the authorized and directed to complete and sign is required, the Part 3, confirming the foregoing negative declaration?
I move that we find this a negative declaration.
Okay. Mike Baker, Monica, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you. So then, that means I'm going to check the box on Part 3 and sign and deliver to Mike tomorrow. Is that okay, Mike? Scott?
That would be perfect. I've got it all set for you, ready to sign.
Okay, great. So I will come in tomorrow and do that. That then moves us along to, I think we now want to close the public hearing. If everyone is comfortable with that, um, can I have a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll move to close the public hearing.
Monica?
Second.
Jim, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
The public hearing is closed?
Who sec, I'm sorry, who seconded that?
Uh, Jim did.
Jim did.
Well, that's how I saw it, anyway.
Okay. Thank you.
Um, so now we have our famous general conditions.
Do you have those, Lisa, or do you guys put them up?
I have them.
Okay.
I have my laminated copy that was dequeased to me by the former chair. Um, "No special permit will be granted by the planning board or the Board of Trustees unless the requested activity meets the following requirements: It will not be detrimental to or endanger the public health, safety, or general welfare, too. It will not be injurious to the use and enjoyment of other property in the vicinity or neighborhood. Three, it will not impede the orderly development of the vicinity or neighborhood, and is appropriate in appearance and in harmony with the existing or intended character of the vicinity or neighborhood. Four, the street system and off-street parking facilities can handle the expected traffic in a safe and efficient manner. Five, natural resource water drainage ways are not adversely affected. Six, water and sewer or waste disposal facilities are adequate. Seven, the general environmental quality of the proposal in terms of site planning, architectural design, and landscaping is compatible with the character of the neighborhood. Eight, lot area access parking and loading facilities are sufficient for the proposed use. Nine, the requested use or facility conforms in all of the respects to the applicable regulations of the district in which it is located. And 10, the applicant has shown that steps will be taken where necessary to meet all performance standards and all other applicable general regulations." I would entertain a motion to say that all of the general conditions have been met.
I move, all conditions have been met.
Tony, Tony, and seconded by Mike. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So last, we have then our resolution. Again, Bill, could I just ask, do I have to read what this is about so carefully on this one? Or more carefully? I've always wondered after you go through all that.
I'm sorry, I was muted. No, just ask the members if they've had a chance to read this and are prepared to go forward without a formal reading.
Okay. I would like to ask my members if they are, have all had the opportunity to read the resolution for special permit 20214515 regarding the Verizon Wireless change to Tax Parcel 46.1-5-4.2-99.
Yes.
Yes, yes, great. So based on the public hearings that we had held on September 13th and September 28th, in accordance with our various laws, um, I would entertain a motion, I, to, oh, we want to add a condition, don't we, before we go into this? We want to add Brett, Brent's condition?
Third-party, how you want to word that, Brett? Third-party inspection of what?
A third-party inspection.
Of the final installation, compliance of the final installation.
The compliance of the final installation will be submitted prior to the issuance.
Whatever words work for Mike.
It can't be too big words. They can't be all.
I was gonna say, don't start that.
Third-party inspection of the compliance of the final installation.
Will be submitted prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy. Is that?
Is that the, is that the?
Right.
Yeah, Mike, do you use certificate of occupancy?
Certificate of compliance.
Compliance, since it's not.
Right, I would see that, I, nobody's gonna occupy, for the completion of, yeah, will be.
Does that work?
Sure.
That work? Well, I guess when they, if you vote on it, it works.
As long as there's nothing else that we need to add, it works. So, we have three conditions, or four conditions now, our usual, our standard soil and erosion, the various building permit being issued has to have approval from our various staff and engineer, and then the required permits and approvals, and now finally the third-party inspection of the compliance of the final installation. Given that, I would entertain a motion to accept resolutions for 20214515 with the conditions.
I move that we approve the special permit with a added conditions.
By the second? Tony, second. So Mike, first, Tony, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. I think Brett, you're good to go.
Thanks so much, folks. Mike, I'll be in touch about getting you the fee for the building permit.
All right, sounds good, Brett.
Thanks, everyone. Have a great night.
You too. Thanks a lot.
Bye now.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is, uh, continuing of this public hearing for special permit 20214516, Arrowhead Ventures slash Tri-X Management Group to develop Area B of the Lansing Meadows Plan Development Area PDA, which includes 12 single-family senior housing units. 12 includes, but it's really, Tax Parcel Number 47.1-1-17.21 and 47.1-1-17.29. This project is directly adjacent to the standalone retail center, BJ's, also BJ, known as BJ's Wholesale Club, Area A, and the proposed commercial section, A1 of the PDA. That is adjacent to the shops at Vittica Mall, and is also adjacent to the enhanced wetlands, Area C of the PDA, adapted to provide a bird habitat and buffer between Areas A, B, and B of the PDA. And please note, there are some corrections. This is a correction from our September 13, 2021 Planning Board Agenda. The parcel numbers have been amended. So, um, as we haven't received any new materials since our last meeting, I, I'm not quite sure what there is to discuss, but, um, I understand that there have been some meetings held between the various engineering parties, both Tri, uh, Arrowheads engineers and ours as well. Is that correct? Mike, would you, Scott, would you please fill us in?
As per playing board request, we did have a meeting of the mind, so to speak, with the engineers. Eric had his representatives, and we had Brett Cross and John Courtney and Don DeHarner with us. Because of the quantity of the material, we decided to break it into two meetings. The first meeting, we covered, we touched on some stormwater, covered quite a bit of that, and then we also, we also discussed and relayed back and forth, basically, what the necessary means for installing the sidewalk. Our second meeting was mainly, basically, the water and sewer on site, and we also touched again on the sidewalk issue. At this point, everyone is exchanging material, exchanging ideas. Hopefully, we can get something, we probably should have another meeting here soon, and hopefully, we can get something finalized.
Okay.
Lisa, would you like me to update what's going on on the site and so forth?
Yeah, if you would like to do that, go ahead.
Sure, just to give you an update. Can you hear me okay?
Yep, I can. I can, everybody hear him okay?
Yeah. Just on the site, like today, we finally had kitchen counters and sinks arrived, which we've been waiting for for quite some time, for six of the units. But that's been a lead time of wait, and I'm forth for quite a bit. We've created, we've accomplished quite a bit more grading on the site. As Mike mentioned, we had meeting regarding the water and everything else tomorrow. We have the backflow preventers being delivered from our supplier. We will also have the water meter delivered from Bolton Point will be on site tomorrow. We're beginning to mobilize the equipment for the installation of riser pipes, so we'll be getting trench box and heavy equipment in as this week progresses, and assuming weather permits, we'll start this week, and we'll start moving forward with that. Again, we will, we will finish the rises when they come out for the pad, where the building's going to be for the backflow preventers. We'll start construction on that, and we will go and work towards finishing the main, towards tapping the main where the water is. There's a valve on that, so we'll tap that and make the connection. We also had, you know, John, I worked with Corin Maine, we worked with Bolton Point, there's some pieces, the spool pieces to connect during this thing, and they've agreed allow us to use some flange adapters, which will allow us to short-circuit some of the lead time and some of the longer items we have. So that, that's pushing that along, which is extremely helpful. You know, the other item we had, which I was, hopefully, that has some direction, Lisa, from you and the board, is that, you know, we had our, we had our landscaping person on site, uh, leaving the weekend to look at a number of the trees that we had. And one of the issues that came up were the blue spruce that we had behind the buildings. And I think I was really not aware, but the needle cast disease the last two years has, has been causing trouble, problems for the, the blue spruce, and you've asked us to look at some other trees. And I've asked him to make some suggestions, and two of the ones that, you know, that, we have two things here. Some of these trees are available, you can get, like, other products, and some you can't. But a suggestion made by him was take the balsam fir and white fir and alternate the two. So at some point in the future, if you do have a disease, it doesn't impact all the trees. But he thought that would be a nice combination in lieu of the blue spruce. So I, I don't know how you think, your thoughts are on that, but that, that was a recommendation from the landscaping.
Well, I, I just think that, you know, we consistently, or I have tried consistently to see, you know, there are recommendations that the county makes, and a long time ago, I think I shared, actually, with, with maybe you, but it's been so long, Eric, about, you know, the, the Cornell information about trees, and I'm glad to hear that you're not going to have all on species, because, yeah, when a disease hits, you're, what, that totally wipes out the entire. I mean, we have so many, and in fact, even on street trees, although it looks great when they're all healthy and alive, you know, this nice consistency, you end up with something. But I've, you know, I don't know, until we see your plan, you know, we can't really comment. But yes, I, I think it's really important. We, for example, had a situation recently where the landscaper suggested hemlock. And when we found that, I was like, the addle gins, you know, are a real problem here. So to some, I'm glad that your landscaper is more up to date on some of this stuff. It sounds like better direction.
Okay.
But we'll have to wait and see, and then we can comment.
Okay. Well, I think.
I could resend you some of that stuff, but I don't know if it's necessary.
I think he's got a pretty good handle on it, Lisa.
It sounds like it, yeah.
Yeah. So I think we're in pretty good shape. So we'll keep moving forward. I think the next two issues, the water will be going through the installation. And the other issue, you know, as Mike said, we just got to work through a couple other issues here. And like, set another meeting up as soon as possible. We got pushed towards a lot of part of last week, which kind of pushed us out on our, on our meeting process. We had some conflicts with some of the people who need to attend the meeting.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions? Okay. We'll wait to hear, um, and see some of those finalized plans, and so we're all working from the same set.
Okay.
Thanks. I, I have no, I think that's it for tonight, unless you have something else that you want to mention?
I don't know.
Okay. Mr. Langy, do you have anything that?
No, I'll, I'll, I'll be in attendance at the next meeting.
Okay, our next one is what, October the 9th or something?
10th.
10th, okay.
Very good.
We'll see you then.
Early night for you, John. It's good.
Yeah, I don't know what I'm gonna do with myself. Thanks, guys.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
October 10th is a Sunday.
Yeah, I just saw that.
It must be 11th.
It's Columbus.
It's a Monday.
I know, this Columbus Day. Thank you, Tony.
Yes, Columbus Day.
It is Columbus Day, but we do not take Columbus Day off.
Okay, so it's 10:11?
Yes, it is 10:11. Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. So, good night.
Good evening.
We're going to be reviewing the lighting plan, the light, or the lighting law, I should say, more specifically.
Lisa?
Yes?
At the last meeting, the planning board requested we clarify things like non-essential lighting, how that's going to be determined, and the actual 50% try to make that.
Right.
Yeah. It's, once again, if you've got 10 lights, do we have them turn off five, or do we have them dim the 50% capacity? But the way this is, it's 50% of the total lighting has to be shut down. And the, one of the reasons for that is, a lot of the existing lighting facilities or parking lots don't have the ability to dim their lights. So it would be, would be kind of a hardship to have them put in something that, you know, that it may not, the structures that they have, or the lighting that they have, might not be able to handle the 50% reduction. So that's how we kind of came up with this. It's been, it, it got changed a little bit, Tony. I talked to John today. Take a look at it again, but I kind of wanted to get it on the planning board agenda, so that maybe we could move this along and get on to the next.
I agree with that. Mike, thank you for doing that.
Thanks, buddy.
You know, I, um, okay, so that was the one thing, and then the other one was what?
The non-essential lighting, which I.
Oh, yeah, not as, all the non-essential must be turned off one and a half hour.
Yeah, and then it kind of defines on here, on A, the non-essential lighting would be recommended by the applicant, then considered and agreed upon by the lighting commission, taking into consideration light trespass, glare, and safety.
Okay, that seems to cover it. You know, I hate to keep bringing something up, but you know, I, I just kept bothering me, because I remembered there's some New York State law that governs it, but I still think maybe we should even just mention it, so there's no confusion, and it was about ATM machine lighting. Because I remember, and there's a, a law, it's, it, that's, but I don't like it, because it says, exterior, this was from the town of Vittica. "Exterior lighting installed to illuminate an ATM may, may exceed the maximum lighting levels, provided that the excess levels are the absolute minimum." Provided that the excess levels are the absolute minimum required in order to comply with, and then blah, blah, article, blah, blah. So I don't know, do we want to get into that or just?
That's up to you guys, if you want to get into it.
Yeah.
My perspective is that. If there's ever a place where you have to give them more light, it's cash machines to avoid cut down in the number of robberies. That's a public safety thing, I don't know if that plays a role here in your mind, but.
Well, as I said, there is a New York state banking law. So that covers it kind of, but we still want it to be downward facing and all of that good stuff, even though it's, you know what I mean? We don't want it to be glaring, but I guess better left unsaid.
I think so, and quite frankly, erring the side of caution. You can make sure that there's enough light to deter robbers. They may aid them, some would argue, but.
Okay, I just thought I would bring it up because it was the one thing I thought, I know there's something about that that has come up.
It's such a small area in any possible land where I think it would be generated light. I wouldn't want my wife going to one of these machines where the light is there, let me put it that way.
I wouldn't want anybody, Monica.
Um, can we put in there in terms of the fifty percent reduction of the lighting? Like I understand older light fixtures don't have the capacity to be dimmed. Can we put in that any future installations of light must have the capacity to be dimmed? So eventually we grandfather out because I see the potential of like Maguire keeping all of their lights on on their cars all night long. But like turning off all the path lights and that's still like a fifty percent reduction, but it's still annoying. So can we put something in where it says like all future line installations must be able to be dimmed to fifty percent or less or something? I mean, are the are these outdoor light fixtures designed standard now? I don't even know.
Well, I think, isn't that what we got into with Maguire is they wanted to? Yeah, that's what highlighted this whole issue.
Like I guess the mall probably has older poles and they probably can't be dimmed, fine. But like if someone's putting new lighting in, I feel like they should be dimmable lighting. And also, I think it just, it's safer and gives you a better glow if they're all dimmed to fifty percent uniformly than if you have like random light on. So is that is that possibility of adding that in?
My first reaction to that is. You're going to have different people playing by different rules at that point.
For a while, for a while, yeah.
I mean, I like your idea, Monica, and I'm just thinking as we go along, if we have, let's say. Four, five, six more developments or whatnot, commercial that, okay, they're on fifty percent dimmable. Where the old ones are fifty percent completely off. I don't know.
Eventually, but then eventually those lights will all get replaced, right? So like twenty years down the road, hope, you know, by that time, everything will be.
So you're saying that when they do change the lights out, they need to be dimmable?
Yes, that's what you're saying.
I I agree with Monica, actually, I really do. I think I'm glad you brought that up, Monica, because I think when we were talking about the Maguire thing, we all thought, yeah, you don't want every other light on. We want everything because there is that night blindness thing where you go from bright light to dim light to bright light to dim light. You, it, the adjustment is hard, but I would think that there's language we can find in another thing where. After so and so date, any new installations must be dimmable kind of thing. The fifty percent.
Or any, any new permit starting, you know, January first of twenty twenty two. You know, any new light installations after January first of twenty twenty two must be dimble light fixtures that can be dimmed to at least fifty percent, something. Then just simple language, so then every light fixture that put in, so at the mall, as they change out their light. They'll change them out to a dimmable fixture, and so eventually, you know, they'll all be in compliance at some point.
Okay, so do you, do you want to change it so that anytime you change a light, it has to be dimmable light? Or do you want to set a deadline when they all have to be changed by?
I just think when you, when they change out the light, I think that's, that's more cost, that's nicer for the people, for property owners.
Any, any new installation or any changes of existing installations?
Like the non-conforming language, what was that again? It's similar to that essentially, isn't it?
Similar to that, but I'm wondering where we can place it. I mean, you want us to go back to the. Lighting Commission for suggestions, or do you want to try to?
How does the lighting commission feel? Two members sitting here, I think.
Well, basically, one member, Tony, right?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so I, I would favor following Monica's recommendation. That as of a date certain to be determined by us tonight, that's for us to determine. That any new construction that falls under this law. Shall provide dimmable lighting so that it can comply with. Section D.
Fifty percent reduction or whatever it is.
D three, and not only new construction, but any replacement of existing lighting shall also conform.
Let's, um, well, I recommend we send, go ahead, Jim, I'm sorry.
Here's a question, because I think, I don't remember if it's at the mall or down by Wegmans, but I've seen fixtures. Where it looks like there's, they have four, four leaves on them or four or four spokes or whatever. So one of the bulbs burns out and it needs to be replaced. Where, where does that fit into this? The bulb, bulb would not be affected.
Yeah, it's just a fixture, if the fixture fails, like if the whole pole fails, they have to replace the pole, then they would have to comply. But a bulb is just a bulb.
Yeah, I, because I think we want to make sure that that's made clear that. There's a fixture being replaced, not just a bulb.
Right, well, under some of the non-conforming lighting fixtures, what, what is it? Any lighting fixture that replaces an existence, an existing lighting fixture kind of thing.
Needs to be demo.
Yeah, shall comply with the requirements of this, but yeah.
Do this go into?
This is not an onerous requirement.
No, it isn't.
Or times with mercury vapor and all other kinds of things, you couldn't dim them. But since everybody's going LED everywhere, and since by definition they can be dimmed, it's not asking. For an onerous burden on present or future owner developers. Just as a comment.
Yeah.
How you want to handle tonight, I think you got to decide what date you want to use. First of all, you want to decide whether you want to do this, that's your decision. Then you got to decide whether you want to come up with the wording yourselves or send it back to the lighting commission. And then you also have to decide in either case, in either of those cases, what date you want this to be started.
Well, sure, we can pretty much start it, the date this law goes into effect.
Right, yeah, I think so. In case somebody should come in next week, once it's approved, the following week with a request to do a development of some sort.
Okay, so do you?
I would say send it back to the lighting commission and have it for next time. And we can just basically be sure we're all comfortable with the language, because I want to be sure that the rest is, yeah, Bill?
Right, we, in terms of where you're going to place it, I put it in power of D three subdivision B. Because that talks about the fifty percent.
Yeah, exactly.
Put that line with three B, D three B.
E three B, yeah.
All right, Mike.
Our lighting commission.
We, we know what to do.
Yeah, we'll send out, I'll put something in there to start out and we'll send it out to you guys to pack away at it.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Great. Let's see. I also, so that takes care of that. So I wanted to remind everybody about the New York Planning Federation, which is starting their, their classes this Friday. If you would like to participate and take the classes. If you let me know, I would have Jody register, there's a fifty dollar fee for the entire series, you know, which are rolled out. Over the course of the month of October. And there is money in the budget in the village for us to take part if we so desire. So if you want to, I'm, I'm going to ask Jody to register me tomorrow. Is there anybody else that would like to be registered? Tony. Tony and I and Jim.
And Jim. Monica.
And Monica.
I need the hours.
Michael Baker, are you all set, Mike? Yeah, okay, um, I think Monica, you might be all set, but I'm not sure.
If I am, I don't have to, if you guys are all going to be there and I'm all set, then I'll spend a fifty dollars. So, because I just did the ninety minute street thing yesterday, yesterday.
Oh, good, was that, yes, was that good, the complete streets?
Yeah, it was good, I think Brent was there, right, I see your name, Brent?
I meant, I, I thought it was today and I suddenly realized, oh, my gosh, and I looked, it was like one thirty, it was too late. Um, do you have anything you want to report to us on? That would be helpful, we'll just keep that in mind.
I can go first.
Well.
You took me in on the. The transportation presentation yesterday. So.
Oh, I, I thought it was.
Yeah. Uh, there was a lot of. Was a kind of a wide range of municipal scenarios ranging from New York City to mostly others urban areas, a little bit. On the city of Ithaca. A lot of discussion about how, there was a phrase called putting roads on diets. And the idea is to try to reduce vehicular. There's a suggestion that there's, there's too much of the right of way is being occupied by vehicular space. And so the idea is to kind of shrink down travel lanes and make opportunities for other modes. Obviously, the other modes being walkers and bicycles. And there was a, a wide variety, there's not, you know, I wouldn't be able to tell you all of the scenarios. But there's a wide variety of combinations of trails and. Combined facilities, but I think that from the perspective of a village. It was a little bit hard to take in because most villages have somewhat narrower right of ways to begin with. And it was a little bit hard to be, imagine us fitting in. Two traffic lanes, two bike lanes and two pedestrian lanes. But obviously, the, the goal would be is to fit in as much of that as possible. So I think that it was a good tool. And, you know, the concept of, the, the, the actual title of the presentation was complete streets. And so that terminology is something that you as planning board members either have already heard or will can, will begin to hear more about. And the idea is just to, to try to get developers. To present the, you know, the village with those opportunities for subdivisions. But in rehabilitation instances, I think it was more geared towards municipal function. DPWs that already have a wide street and not a lot of shoulders or bike lanes. That there's a, some attention given to that by the municipal engineering staff to try to account for that.
Monica, anything you want to add?
Um, no, that was pretty complete, I mean, I think there's opportunities, I think, in the village, we can make our streets a little more friendlier. My street, hopefully, we're working on trip hammer too, I think the crosswalks and trip hammer, there's a, there were some examples in Ithaca that he was talking about. Downtown, like the Meadow Street one, where I almost got by a car at that intersection, actually, when I was running one day. So I think we can incorporate, I think a lot of our crosswalks are good, like they're very, you're talking about like labeling things, defining spaces. So people know where to go, because if things are ambiguous, ambiguous, then cars will be all over the place, pedestrians will be all over the place and become dangerous. So like defining where pedestrians can go, defining where cars can go, defining where bikes can go. It's very helpful to making everybody feel safer on the road. Narrow roads for cars, narrower lanes for cars are also helpful because they slow people down, make drivers more aware. So I mean, like things like that.
Um, is trip, Bill?
I'm making an observation, I met Lisa years ago because I had an office right up one trip on the road. And I would sometimes have to take my car into the shop, there was a gas station down there, they have an excellent mechanic. And I have to tell you, I thought I was taking my life in my hands, even though I was walking in the sidewalk. Because those cars are all going at least fifty miles an hour, we're kidding ourselves if we think otherwise. And I knew if one driver lost tension, lost control, I was done for. So what I'd like every member of the board to do is park your car at the YMCA, come out to Trip Hammer, make a right. Walk all the way down to the entrance to the Trip Hammer Mall. Cross that street, try to wear dark things at night, okay? And then walk all the way back and you'll realize this road is a real problem, you can't treat it like India Mayberry. It's really, they treat it like it's a state highway. And I know that from the experience of being there.
I don't want anybody to do what he just said, or we won't have a board left.
No, I think, I think it's honestly dangerous.
Oh, no, I, I was gonna say, I had a recent experience, I, I agree, Ronnie, you got a comment?
Sorry, I was muted, I just wanted to point out, I got the, the announcements from the Planning Federation also. And there's one of the courses that deals specifically with short-term rentals. So that would be an excellent one for members of the planning board to attend so that we can make some progress on. What we want to do with short-term rentals.
Yeah, I actually had just mentioned to Carolyn Greenwall too, who was our kind of expert on this. That I would like to cycle back and sort of find out what's the latest and greatest, but if there's anything. But yeah, I, I've also mentioned to Mike Scott that it's, I really want to revisit short-term rental, I think it's going to be important going forward. So I had already asterisked that myself, Ronnie, I will tell you. But in, in terms of the complete streets too, I was, you know, coming out of the Keugah Mall. Right by the mobile gas station, I'm going to turn right to go north on Trip Hammer. And you can turn right on red there. And you shouldn't be able to, because guess what, of course, there's the ability for people to be crossing. And unless, you know, you're watching and you don't see the person step off the curb, it's just, it's scary. I mean, it's just, there's a bunch of them, but I don't know, I think North Trip Hammer is a state road, is that correct? Or something, it's not something? Is it a county road?
The only state part of it, it, that's within our jurisdiction is the actual overpass.
So do we, can we change what lights do as a village or is that a count? I just remember when we put in the traffic light craft road, it was like exorbitantly expensive. And I thought we had to get permission from somebody, I don't know.
If we could just put a no turn on, that's fine.
Yeah, well, that's what I'm thinking, I'll, I'll paint one up tomorrow, yeah, Mike?
From what I remember from talking with John Courtney, whenever that light right there in front of Keugah Mall and the light that's on the other side of the bridge, well, actually on the bridge. Whenever they go out, that's a state, that's a state issue that they have to take care of. So I believe both those lights fall under state category.
So if we wanted a no turn on red there, it would be a state thing?
I, I believe so, I'd have to ask John Courtney, I believe so, though.
Well, put that on your list in case you.
I mean, another, another thing about pedestrian crossings, which I thought were interesting, is that you always want to shorten the distance, pedestrian needs to go across the street. So things like, you know, the, the island, the pedestrian island in the middle of large roads, so that a pedestrian has a place to stop. And not have to, because like trip at that, that area, as you go to the mall, that intersection is quite wide and it's a long climb to cross the road. So we can think about doing things like, and you can do that with striping too, it's like a pedestrian island there so that they have a place to stop if they don't get. The entire way across at the light, things like that. So just some things where you go around the village to think about how we can improve safety.
Yeah, a physical island's probably better, because I mean, you can drive over striping. And I think at Route thirteen and Warren Road, I, I think there's a physical island there, because that's also a really long walk across thirteen. And even though you keep your eyes open and watch the light, it's still uncomfortable making the crossing.
Yeah, like Monica said, there's a lot of places we could be taking a look at. Okay, um. The next item is, I think then, if anybody else has anything else, is?
Mike Scott, there.
Mike Scott? Mike Scott?
Well, we're on other business. Um, I have spoken with uh, Renata Bellard, is that how you say that, Ronnie? Renata Bellard? From East Point.
Oh, yeah.
And uh, Marissa Vimenzio, who I usually speak to. Um, you know, I, I reached out to him to discuss, you know, what you had, with the planning board had mentioned to them about uh, some possibilities for that entry and exit for their western uh, entry exit area. I'm recommending that they come to our next meeting so that we can hash this thing out and get this thing settled instead of going back and forth. At this point, I'm, I'm sending stuff that you say to them and then back to you. Um, they're open for that, so they, they said that would be great, they'd love to come in, so I'm just kind of hoping that the planning board would like to have that done, we can kind of get this thing settled.
Yeah, every time I drive by, it seems like there has to be some modification made to the width of it, like if their concern is especially trucks. It's right kind of near the curve and it's like, you think of a big, I don't know what kind of trucks they have going through there, but that was one of the things, so yes, it would be good to have the conversation with them. So you're gonna add them to the October eleventh?
Yep, I, I will invite them to the October eleventh meeting.
Okay, um, is everybody gonna be here for October eleventh? Or are you gonna be celebrating Columbus Day? Okay, good.
I, I can't because we have a meeting.
I know.
I'm an Italian American, I deserve an exact.
Indigenous Peoples' Day?
Oh, that's right, the calendars have changed. Um, I think that practically, I think Mike was practically brand new. And I came in and he says something, I said Columbus, do we have Columbus Day? And I said, oh no, we work in, he says, oh my God, it's a really important holiday to my family. And he said it totally deadpan, you know, and I just looked at him, of course he cracks up. We should have known, man, we were in trouble, right? At any rate, okay, so trustee report was, was mine. Um, let's see. They, they did not address one of the on, items on there regarding a, an EAF for the sanitary service. So it started with um, the Lansing Meadows sidewalk escrow um, amount. And there was some discussions, there was some change in the linear footage, but it includes the sidewalk that's gonna go not only along Oak Crest, but also the, the one that connects the project to um, Hickory, Hickory Lane or Hickory Hill or whatever, what is it called?
Lisa, that's, that, that, that's incorrect. We were, we were, it was mentioned, but it was incorrect. I found out the next day. That the, the sidewalk, the linear feet changed because the engineering plans changed from the original, from the time the original estimate was made. The sidewalk that will run north and south between Oak Crest Road and Hickory um, is solely the responsibility of the developer. That's not something that we would control, so.
Oh, I see what you're saying, in case, so he builds it or he doesn't, but.
Right, we, we can say we want that, for instance, and as a condition of a special permit, but the estimate for the escrow does not include that sidewalk.
So, but it still is the seven hundred and sixty square feet compared to the.
Linear feet.
Uh, linear feet, sorry. Okay, so the amount, I don't know if, if I shared this with everybody or not, but it's um, it did increase because of that from, it was a hundred and twenty-three some odd thousand, it's now up to one fifty-two, eight fifty-nine is the new amount. So that when we're considering the conditions for the special permit, we should keep that in mind. Um, the second, there was quite a bit of discussion, there was discussion about a proposed change by um, TCAT to just, I guess, we don't really have much authority to do it, but um, they proposed a change to the bus stop location on Uptown Road. And there's, it's really tight there to put it on the north side, but um, or I guess it's on the north side, but it really would be more ideal in many ways to keep it on the other side where the apartments are and where ultimately I believe there'll be a sidewalk, but um, there's not enough room to do it on the south side or, and otherwise you have to extend onto state property. And regardless, there's no pull-off for the bus on either side, so when, whenever the bus comes, obviously it stops and traffic stops and hopefully nobody gets so impatient they go around, but um, so there was really not a terrific uh, resolution of that exactly, but.
We will have, we will have a meeting on Thursday with NICE.
I was gonna say, you were hoping to meet with them, oh, good.
Yes, and we will discuss, we want to actually see their plans and talk with their, their contractor to understand what they want to do because we're sort of making assumptions without actually seeing any plans, so after Thursday, we should have more information.
Oh, good. Okay, well, I think that's.
And Lisa.
Yeah?
And Lisa, on that, with the, with them proposing to go on the north side, we have every right not to allow them to put it in our right of way. And if, if that's the case, their only other option would be to put it on state land.
Oh, that's what it was, okay. All right, um, and then there were some others discussion about um, some equipment that's been requested by the DPW and replacing some smaller equipment and whether that was needed and they wanted more information. Um, and some of the uh, some discussion about projects that may have been budgeted that have not been able to be started. You know, that can get you into trouble ultimately if that happens too many times. Um, so the trustees want to take a look at, in project delays. There was also a discussion about some retirement health benefits for some of the employees. But the biggest thing for us to keep in mind was the, I think the, the TCAT pull-off we should be aware of are the bus stop and of course the escrow. And the others are, are important to us as citizens, but not so much as a planning board. Anything to add that I forgot on that? I think that Monica?
Was there, I'm, I'm sorry, you said, was there a deadline for that escrow or you're just discussing the amount because of the changes?
Uh, just a, just a discussion and it'll be one of the conditions, we'll want it funded. Um, they, they, regardless of, first of all, we don't have the sidewalk plan that we've looked at, that's been approved by everyone. So when, when we see that and we go to do the special permit, I would think that we need to have um, an escrow account set up and funded.
Yeah, I would want a funded escrow account before I would approve the new special permit for sure, so.
Yes, I think we all pretty much agree with that. So other than that, um.
Lisa, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Um, can we be briefed by somebody about the status of Lansing Meadows' appeal to our stop work order?
Oh, Bill, you want to comment on that?
Sure, um, there's a stay in effect and they, we adjourned it till mid-October because they gave us a set of papers, I don't have them in hand. And I'm responding to those and we'll conduct that next hearing.
I had sent, I thought I had sent an email to everyone saying that uh, the day of the BZA meeting, uh, the BZA was presented with a large amount of paperwork. And obviously, there's not time to review that in that short notice. So no decision could be made and as long as no decision is made, there's a stay on the building permit, right?
Yes, stay continues until there's a decision.
So he can continue to work. Monica?
All right, this is my last, as an aside, is there any way that we can make a law or a rule or something where any documents that are not submitted by like the Thursday before a meeting are not admissible? Is there like, any way we could do that?
Yeah.
Not really, not really.
Really?
Hmm.
Not a lot, but we, we are not going to entertain, we've already.
What, what you could do is say, we will simply not take this matter up at this meeting, if we don't get the records a certain bit, but you can't strike them forever from your record.
Oh, I don't think Monica meant that.
I mean, just not take them into account basically.
No, 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 what you say is we'll not take this issue up this time, we're gonna put you over for another two weeks or a month.
I'm saying like with the Eric situation, he can keep doing that and then just continuing to work, right? Cause like if he's just slamming documents on.
It could be, but there are only so many documents that can file, so they filed their papers.
I don't know, you're a lawyer, there's lots of documents you can make up, I'm sure.
But whether, you know, we just say we reject them out of hand, I wanted to read this material first and it's classic Eric. So.
But what we can't, no, I think what um, I have been discussing though with Mike Scott is, you know, we've always been accommodating people who get some stuff to us kind of late. And I think it's just time regardless whether it's one of us applying for a special permit, I don't care who it is, if the materials aren't in by Thursday prior to this planning board meeting so that Mike can get it to us, that we can review it over the weekend. This is not a day job for most of us. So you know, you can't always focus on this until the weekend. And it's just, and, and, and decisions made in haste are usually bad ones. Well, in this situation, at any rate.
No, but generally, we need the weekend, most people need the weekend to digest this material. Otherwise you're just not really discharging your duties if you haven't had a chance to really work through the papers.
And so it, and you know, because we do meet twice a month, unlike some municipalities, they have a two-week delay.
Right.
So, and everyone knows, including Arrowhead Ventures exactly when our meetings are, it's not a surprise. So they know if they don't have the materials in, they're not gonna get heard for two weeks. So it looks like we're, we're now gonna have, yeah, Mike?
Uh, and for the most part, uh, just about everybody, oh, but uh, you know, they abide by that. When I send them an email, say, hey, I needed them by Thursday to get it to the planning board, there's just a few people that, that don't usually repetitive folks that don't uh, do that.
I'm just saying, in the, in the instances where it's advantageous for them not to be heard, like in this case. By doing this over and over again prolongs, you know.
You can stop that because I looked at the papers and I said, I really don't think there's much here, but I wanted to read the cases first and I needed some time to do it. If they put in some other papers in the future, we can look at it and say, forget about it. We're just gonna go ahead and have the hearing and we're gonna grant a denial or relief.
But yeah, well, I mean, obviously somebody can pull it, sort of stalling tactics that, you know, benefit them, but then we also don't have to bend over backwards to accommodate someone that doesn't provide us the material free request.
A good rule of thumb, which I say to clients from time to time, is you can have a quick decision or you can have a good one. And this is a very accomplished lawyer who came, and I'm not afraid of him or anything like that, but I wanted to read what he wrote. Rather than us go in and take positions and I wanted to, you know, research it, which I've been doing.
And there's probably going to be some exceptions, for example, like if I've gotta get something to you folks that present the lighting plan tonight. I kind of wanted to get it on
Right.
board and I needed some little extra time to do it, so.
I mean, with you and Brent and, and Bill, like I don't, I know, like you trust me, that's our best interest at heart, right? You give it three five minutes for the meeting, like that's fine. I'm talking about just other people and it's, it's, and it's more for the stalling tactic, right, rather than it actually, you know.
In this, in this case, I'm not so sure this lawyer did a stalling tactic. My guess is this lawyer didn't get called about this until a few days before. Um, knowing the, his client, so I.
Yeah, I'm often not blaming the lawyer, I'm blaming the client.
You're one of the minority who doesn't blame, blame the lawyer, but I suspect he just got this last minute and put it together. So I wouldn't blame John and you know, you gotta give a lawyer a chance to put papers in and that's it, we now understand his case.
Yeah, but um, at least the work gets, is getting done, I guess, that's the good news.
That's the good news. Probably can't as a government, there's no water yet, but we'll see, I mean.
Yeah, I was gonna say, my, my main concern is I don't care about the cabinets or the sinks or the toilets, I care what they're connected to, I care about the infrastructure. I really don't care what he does inside of those things. And I do care about the, the landscaping because I, I go over there and these buildings are so close to the lot lines that there's not room for big trees. Um, I, I'm anxious to see the plans because I, I don't know what they plan to do outside the back sliders, what, where those go, do they have any patios or anything? I, I don't know. At this point, I, I pull out plans that are years old and I'm not even sure I'm, I'm, there's the right ones. So I'm waiting, I'm anxious to have a new set of plans that are just the plans that we all have a new starting point.
For what's worth, Lisa told me she's already noticed two of the heating units seem to be decrepit, right?
Well, they're not level anymore, they didn't put enough foundation or something. Is that, shouldn't they be level? The pad should be level for those, shouldn't they? The ones behind, right by the, you know, I drive by the ones I can see, of course, are the ones that face the fire station.
Right.
One of them is quite crooked at this point. Leans towards BJ's. The other one, I can't quite tell, I sort of look against the, the siding of the building to see whether it's level, but um, I don't know, that's part of the inspection ultimately, won't it be?
Yep.
Yep, so there's a ways to go yet, as we all know. I guess it's job security for us all. So to speak.
It's disgraceful.
It is disgraceful, but, okay, so um, on the agenda next time then we'll have, we can expect as of today that we'll have Eric. We'll have East Point. We'll have, we don't know about the beers.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know, they had sent me an email last week that they were still gonna be a couple of weeks, so I don't know what to do.
But we don't know what a couple is, okay, so, and you'll keep us posted if anything else comes up, we have no other little small.
Um, I don't really have anything that I know of that's coming up.
Okay, good.
So if we do slow down, it's like you and I had that conversation today, Lisa, if we do slow down, you know, maybe we can start hitting some of these, you know, getting back to some of these topics that we
Yeah.
they brought up before.
Right, good. Okay, so um, just to reiterate, I'm going to call Jody tomorrow and Tony and Lisa and Jim, we're gonna sign up for New York Planning Federation, correct?
Yeah, and if, you know, if money's an object, I can call Jody and see where my hours are, but um, but a couple of them looked really interesting.
Oh, I, no, what I'm saying is it, it isn't just needing hours, if it, no, there is, normally, you know, um, we, we used to be able to send a person or two to the Planning Federation, it was a whole lot more expensive than fifty bucks, I can tell you. So um, no, Jody said that's fine. Well, she didn't say that, she said the village did have money to pay for this. And I was, but I think just for general education, it's, it's important.
I mean, even, yeah, even if all five, five of us signed up, it's still cheaper than sending one person to Bolton Point.
Yeah.
Bolton's planting.
Yes, it is. Okay, I think if nobody else has anything, you know what? Who's gonna do it? Mike Baker moves, we adjourn. Jim second in, uh-oh, my clock, where's my clock?
Eight ten P M.
Eight ten P M, all those in favor? I? Okay, so that was Mike to Jim, right?
Yep.
Okay, all right, guys.
Good night, folks.
Good night.